Appreciate our guests being here. A little bit empty compared to last night.
Yeah.
Um, it's a big work session, so it won't fall under normal council rules. Uh, Don, if you'd like to say a word of prayer?
Amen. Heavenly Father, we bow before you tonight, Lord, to thank you for your blessings. Thank you for loving us and helping us and for everything that you do for us, Lord, we're so thankful for. We pray, Heavenly Father, to bless the sick people out there, Lord, as so many of them, just be with them in our area and just comfort them and heal them if it could be your will. We pray now, Heavenly Father, as we're going to a meeting, that you'll just guide us, Lord, and help us to make the right decisions for our town and for the people in the town. And we ask that you'll just forgive us all, Lord, where we fail you, and we give you the praise for it all. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Let's do the prayers.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, well, once again, we're here to discuss the grocery store. Try to come up with a solution of, uh... If we can help, how we can help. So we will open up the floor for anybody who wants to start up?
Well, one thing I wanted to do was get Brenda or Alan or whoever up here to kind of give us an idea of what the financial impact was going to be on our, uh, city. If we did move forward with borrowing this money, you know, can we pay for it? What's it going to do to our budget? Uh, uh, what if this thing did go south? What will that do to us at that point? And then, if, uh, if it did go south and how much would we have to raise taxes? You know, that, that can answer some lot of good questions right there. We might sit here and say, one, you know, one cent tax may do it, and one cent tax may not do it. I don't know. But that, just some, just kind of give us a, um, what kind of impact it's going, it could have on us. You know, you need to look at, look at it. That's how we do at work. We're going to make a move, and a critical move like this, you need to analyze it and, uh, get down to the nuts and bolts of it and see, uh, just how it's going. How it's going to affect us on the month.
Can I follow, I, I'd like to follow up with his questions. I, I've done a risk, what I call a small risk analysis, and it was strictly based on the options that were presented to us from the Bozeman Brothers. Everyone of y'all should have got a copy of this. Everyone, you get a copy of this, option one, option two, and option three.
Okay.
Okay? And based on these options, option one is definitely out the door because that was thirteen thousand dollars. Nobody could sustain that type of payment, not even a grocery store. So, the risk analysis I handed out was a piece of paper and it had four risks. The first one was risk one would be that while it closes the doors, it shuts down, the average is sixty thousand dollars and six hundred and sixty-five, ten cents, that's over an average of three years. We would have to raise the taxes more than one cent to make up that money difference. Okay? The next risk is borrow money, business goes under, over four thousand a month payment. That's based on if it's a flat rate, if it's a balloon rate, that payment will be higher. You still lose your revenue. The total town loss would be ten thousand dollars a month or more. Okay? Risk three is borrow money, business is successful. You know, they make it for the twenty years and they get, you know, everything goes good. Risk four is off of the option two that was on Wally's sheet right here. If you look at it, it says he borrows the money from Regent's Bank at six hundred thousand dollars finances at ten years and, you know, all that. Y'all can read that. Risk four would be the company borrowed the money, the business goes under. We don't have the risk of losing that money because it's under them at that time. So we would lose the revenue from that, which would cause us to raise taxes. Okay? Usually when we do risk analysis in my business that I work in, is if the highest risk is overweight, it comes off the table. That's the way we've done it. So, that's my piece on it and on that part. Okay?
Yep.
And that's strictly based off of that. Then I also asked him on the phone just a few, about thirty minutes ago, if he had considered an SBA loan. That option is not on here. He's going to get back with us because an SBA loan is a lot cheaper than you go into Regent's Bank and borrow at five point two five percent. Those SBA loans are made for the small businesses to come in. We don't have those figures yet. Okay?
Tabby, looking at your risk analysis you done, basically number one and number four would equal to be the same thing.
That's correct because the, the liability would, the go-to the company themselves, and it would not come to the town of Hackenberg. Because Wally's had a situation where he's going to close the doors no matter what. I mean, there's nothing we can do about that. If he closes the doors tomorrow, we will start losing that revenue from that store. So, in risk four on that is that they've borrowed the money, they're, uh, they're having the risk of that payment, not us. So if they get in there and they go bankrupt, if something happens, then the risk does not come back to the town, it comes back to them for that payment. But, we're good together. So, I mean, you gotta look at these risks. You can't just go in here and say...
We ain't got, why aren't we looking about this?
You gotta look at the risks.
He gave us one option.
No, he didn't. I thought, no, he didn't.
He didn't.
I was all, I don't know.
We gonna have to look.
He gave us more options.
I don't care what he give us either. I'm going to vote to keep the town running.
That's fine.
That's fine, and we all, let's, let's get something clear. Everybody, yeah.
Unless you're still, y'all just saying, we ain't doing nothing to help Hackenberg.
We didn't say that, we didn't say that, Don, you ain't listening.
Everybody up here, Don, loves Hackenberg.
They don't love it enough to get it running. If we lose the grocery store, Kevin, we gonna go back there.
Everybody up here is passionate about Hackenberg.
That's right.
We want to make the right decision for Hackenberg. Now that means you've got to step back and take a look, analyze your goods. We don't want to make a foul move here and somebody have to pay for it in about five years. And move, work through this. It's a process.
Daryl, did he not just tell us on the phone that if we made bad decisions, this process, how many times did that one man change? Four times. He just sit there and told us that on the phone.
Do, do what now?
The grocery store that another place, they told him, "Come in here and take it over," and it had changed on us four different times because the time, they had made bad decisions. He said that right in that room in there.
Well, it could, the town couldn't support him.
That's correct. But he also said that he had not looked at the SBA side of it. SBA side...
Well, he has looked at it.
He did not.
Didn't, yeah, he had, he said he had. Did he not tell me? He just had it within detail along the way.
He did not go, Daryl, use it now. He, he asked, but he did not go into the details of what the value of a loan would be if he went in there. He said that on the phone just now. Y'all both were in the room.
Well, can we give him, what Lani was talking about on the phone originally, the deed to the building and let him get the money and us be like, like co-sign or own it or something? Where if they go under, it reverts back to us and then we're responsible for the remainder?
If they use the deed to finance it, the bank's going to be on the deed. They're, they're all on the deed. I mean, they're, they're all have the title to the building. No matter who else signed something.
And this, this is not, don't have to stretch out a long period of time. Oh, we just, I just want to know what financial impact it's going to be. And us look at some of the negative side, see what's going to happen. If it did go south, what's our options? And, uh, then we need to know that too, to know how much tax we do need to raise. If it did go south.
Well, also leave to know what...
That'll answer that question. One cent might do it, two cents might do it. I don't know. I'm not...
Well, also leave to know what our liabilities are. Now, what Sherry looked at in the book, she was telling me today, and I didn't realize.
Yeah, everybody that information, right here in this book. They gave it to us.
Well, a couple things.
What liability?
Everything in here. It, oh, how much is our debt?
What liability are we talking about on the grocery store?
The li, what are you talking about here, I'm sorry?
He just said, he didn't know about what liability.
I'm talking about our other bill.
Oh, he's talking about what is our debt. One of the, one of the questions that we've got to determine is, he asked a question, is what's your debt? So in this book right here, it tells what our town debt is. Two of the things that are in here, which I'm sure most of y'all have not even looked at.
It's not the store if we incurred that debt.
Yeah, because you gotta take that into account, what our debt is.
Well, you take the revenue of what we're making out here, you can...
That's, that's true, but the question was asked, the question was asked, and you have to take that into account. There's two debts showing up in this book. Uh, the first one is First National Bank of Hamilton, no payable, the loan is one hundred sixteen thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars. That's what's in this book.
Yes.
So who's, whose debt is that?
That's the fire department.
That's the fire department, so, okay. The next one says Bancorp Bank, least payable of fleet vehicles, sixty-five thousand dollars.
That's the two remaining.
Okay? So that is still debt that is on this town. So, here's, what you gotta also look at is these lump sum payments. Are these monthly payments or they lump sum? Because we agreed when we borrowed the money of the council that the equipment that was sold would pay off that, and we should not have that debt right now. I'm...
The fire department?
No, the, the cars. And it's showing up on this balance sheet that we still got debt. Now, how's that possible? Because that goes into your overall that you've got to make, we got to make a lump sum payment. So that's twenty-four thousand dollars that's got to come out. Where is that money going to come from? That affects your overall budget. That affects your decision because if you go with that risk, you're going to take a chance of looking at, y'all talked about Hodges last week. What happened to that question you brought down? They went down there, borrowed all that money, they're bankrupt.
Honestly, we don't know what happened to it.
Well, I'm just saying, they're, they're in financial trouble right now because of this risk.
We don't know why.
But right here, it's in black and white, guys. What happened right here? Why was that not paid?
We don't know how they operated. We don't know how.
Yeah, that, that was supposed to have paid off.
That's correct. It was supposed to have paid off. And that's part of your liability, that's part of your debt that's for this payment. Now, if we're going to go borrow six hundred fifty thousand dollars for a twenty-year period, that's going to increase that debt on here too, that's going to require a lump, either a monthly payment or a lump sum payment, which in turn increases our map that we've got to make sure that we got in the budget. And do we have it in the budget? That's the question we're wanting to know.
There's no guarantee, Tabby, that we ever make a payment on that.
The, uh, the, the two, just two things, I, I don't know, financial impact. And then the second thing is, uh, to get out of this work session is, uh, we're talking about borrowing six hundred fifty thousand dollars. I think if we're going to do that, let's say we agree to do that, is we need to, uh, first of all, before we agree to that amount, is we need a, somebody to come in and assess the value of the goods on there. Not just what somebody tells me it's worth. We need a professional to do that. And so I have contacted the Northwest Council of Local Governments, and they can help, come alongside, help us and give us some names and numbers and stuff like that to help keep our wheels out of the ditch. We, we, if we do it, we want to do it right, guys. We want to do it right. We want to, we want to set in any perimeters we need to set in. In case it does go south, we ain't got to be afraid. We know, we already, we already got a game plan. We're ready. We're ready for it. But, um, to me, I think that's something they do, it, you know, it could be worth eight hundred thousand dollars, it could be worth three hundred thousand dollars. But I think we owe the town people, before we spend our money, to get an assessment of that.
Well, wait, he gave one point four million.
I don't care what he gives.
Five years ago, so...
I, I can't help all that. I'm going to know what it's worth. Here's my idea.
Did the bank not say that they were going to give that appraised?
They don't even know if they need to appraise the content.
I think we need an outside party. It's only fair to give it appraised. And then the, the third thing is, I, I don't, I don't agree with borrowing money on perishable goods. I don't, you know, if we're agreeing to doing it, I'd like to really just look at maybe some of the equipment. And that way the town owns that.
Kevin, he's basically giving the groceries. We're, that's what we're borrowing the money on.
Well, let's, let's, I think it needs appraised.
So has the appraised money on none of the commodities. That's just a shelving and food and stuff.
Yeah, because you, you get messed up right there with some perishable. And what I had in mind was the, the employee tax that we get. We get, what, seventeen thousand dollars a year of it?
You're talking occupational?
Occupational tax.
It's an average of fifteen, five, almost sixteen.
If this payment on this is four thousand, we could go ahead and earmark four thousand of that every month and put it in a bank in a separate account. If we ever needed money, we'd have it. Plus, the fire department, they need to pay for that. They're getting a good tax so that they could pay their twenty thousand, their payments, they could pay that building off and get us out of that. And that's going to give a bunch more incirculation. Thank y'all for letting me talk.
So on the occupational tax, you know, that's a good idea. However, that occupational tax goes into our general budget.
It does, but, but, but we don't need all of it.
Yeah, we do because that's what the figures I got right here.
I have transferred eighty thousand dollars the last year, and we've got one million that's not being...
We, we calculated that, right.
I know, but I'm just saying, I have not transferred it all because we haven't needed it. And there's a hundred and ten thousand still left in that, you know, right now. We've got two more months to go in this year. And that's going to be a little bit over what we budgeted.
So the eighty was transferred just to pay bills and salaries and stuff.
It was just to make sure we had enough.
When we made our year-to-date budget, which is right here, it was taken in in account, the amount of revenues and the occupational taxes, every bit of that's in here. The only way you can increase that revenue value is you have to look at what your amount is now, and that value would go up if we've increased occupation will be, uh, con, uh, whatever, uh, not rain or any more, con, front door. If they've added more people. So that is a flag that would budget it off that. The only way you're going to increase occupation is more people are hired.
Well, I'm just saying, we budgeted two eleven, and by the time the year is up, I think it's going to be a little bit more than that. I can't tell you what we're going to do.
You can't because that, that, you're right. They could come in here and hire twenty more people over there, and then two years later lay them off. But we budgeted based on previous numbers, and that's how you do the budget. What is it?
I wouldn't know. I never did it for twenty-four years.
Well, in two months, we can adjust the budget again.
The, the sixteen thousand, uh, a year, the sixteen thousand a year we've been paying on the fire department, that would pay for us too.
Yeah, that's, that's money that is going towards the five mil tax.
Three mil.
Three mil, sorry, three mil. So you've got that money coming in and have to transfer it over, whatever that value is.
Yeah.
If, if that, if that stays, and if they do a move like that, you have to draw the line for it. We're talking strictly budget now.
Fire department, I'm scared.
Kevin, you had asked for their opinions, and I had to cut speed.
Yeah, listen.
Go ahead.
Can y'all help us with that? What kind of financial impact is going to be seen that that would do to us if we bought it on our current budget? And then, our, our current income, revenue? And then, what if it did go south? What would that do to us? And if we knew some of that, and it might take a little digging, and y'all may not can even answer none of that right now, but that let us know, if we say we've got to raise a tax, how much tax?
We can get you those some.
You know, that, that helps.
We had, we had done those calculations, but we can, we can do that for you.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, we, we can get you something up here probably by Monday.
Yeah, that'd be good. That, that, that kind of, kind of let us know where we stand financially on, uh... And another study I've done is on Hackenberg, on the people of Hackenberg, the average income in the people, for the people of Hackenberg is sixteen thousand dollars a year. How can you raise taxes on people on fixed income, sixteen thousand dollars?
Well, somebody gave you some misfigures because right here's what he told us in our meeting.
It was on the internet.
Well, this, this is what he pulled off the internet too. Let me find it. It was thirty-two thousand dollars is what it was. And he pulled that national thing strictly off, and he gave us those proposals. This is on sheet number two. Right here on the backside, if y'all would have read it. It says, "National Statistics..."
Hold on, hold on. We did read it.
Somebody did. Somebody did. It says, "National Statistics, the industry average grocery store operates off of one percent net sales." Okay? Two hundred stores close per year when they do not gross one hundred thousand dollars per week. Now, these men gave us this. Hackenberg Trade Area is two hundred and twelve thousand dollars of grocery sales, uh, sales per week. Industry average states the store would get thirty-five percent of that, which is equal to seventy-four thousand dollars and two hundred per week. That's below the average, twenty-six thousand dollars. In Hackenberg, the trade area average yearly household income is thirty-two thousand dollars. These are strictly statistics that he pulled before that meeting. The average household income in Alabama is forty-eight thousand dollars. So, and like I said, we're below poverty levels. I mean, that's, that's, that's right. And so, that's why we're talking about budget figures. If we're this far behind in this risk, and he's gave us the numbers, but he said he's willing to come up here. You know, and he said, he told me on the phone. I said, "I'm, I'm for you. I want you to come."
Yeah.
I said, "If you look at the SBA loan," and Daryl said, "I'm for it," you know, he got him on the phone for me and let me ask those questions. And when I asked the questions, I said, "Have you, would you please go and spot, uh, speak to Regina?" I think her name is Regina? Or, on there? He said yes. He committed that he would go talk to her because he's on the board. He is on the SBA board, and that he would go ask these questions because he wants to come, and we want him to come.
We got to find the best deal for the town if we're in it.
We got to find because if you can get an SBA loan at two or three, four percent and get it paid for instead of us going in, in debt for twenty years and take that big of a risk, it's smarter to go out here and ask those other questions.
From what I read, from what I, what I've read into what he give us, that this is telling me that it, he's telling us, it won't work.
Well, it will work, Kevin, because we've had one for forty years, so...
That's just what, I'm just talking about that.
Yeah, but he's thinking, yeah.
But we know that it will because we've had one.
So that, that raises a red flag right there. We need to do a little investigative work and try to make sure we're making the right decisions and stuff. We'd be foolish not to. And try to get, you know, as much wise counsel, uh, when somebody mentioned biblical stuff last meeting, is it's biblical. We need some wise counsel. And there's more wise counsel with more heads. More heads we can get put to this. So we need to do that.
And, and I'm just stating the facts, y'all. I'm not doing, this is not me. This is strictly facts.
Glimmen Dunes, what it sounds like.
No, it's not Glimmen Dunes.
No, no.
What we suggest, what we need to do tonight is come up with a plan to present to them and see if, you know...
If he could, if he could get an SBA loan, you know, if he could get that SBA loan and be working, because he said, he told me that he had one, which one, Dora, thirty years?
Yeah, we had a move.
He said that on the phone.
If he could get one, it could take up to six months to even find out if he can get one. The store was gone by then.
I understand that. Let, let's ask, hold on, hold on. Let's say they closed. We don't, let's say they closed, and they do, and it takes them six months, and he's committed to come back in here. Well, after the tornado, we didn't have, hold on, let me finish speaking. After the store, after the tornado, we didn't have one. We had, we already know that. We had to go somewhere else. But the minute that new store opened up, what did the town of Hackenberg do?
Well, not everybody done it.
They supported it. Do you not think they'll support it again?
No, I didn't.
I mean, if, if, if he gets it at a cheaper loan?
Well, what, I, I, I still could, you know, keep these meetings. Let's, let's find out what we got to know. Let's get some facts. We need to know the financial impact. Then we need to have an assessment on what, if we decide we're going to buy that stuff over there, let's get an outside unbiased opinion from a professional to give us an appraisal of what's over there. That's just smart. I'm, that's just like me buying, buying a car. Keith might want to sell me a car and tell me he's, he wants ten thousand dollars for it, and I may, it may not be worth it, and it could be worth twenty. I don't know. Let's get somebody to look at it. And tell us, because it may not be six hundred. It might be worth seven or eight. It may not be worth the two or three hundred. I don't know. That's just good business.
Where did they, uh, figure the warranty here? Is that, is that why he left the six fifty? Is that why he owed, just on the equipment? But he said he would take six. And that was just strictly on refrigerators, the contents. That's not count commodity. When I say commodities, I'm going to always on the sale.
Twenty-five on them, he's going to pay it off.
So basically, the six fifty is just to cover his equipment, refrigerators, some coolers, meat slices, and all that.
I just want to make it plain, if it closes, they're not coming, and I don't see anybody else coming either. Maybe they will. He, he's not going to keep going for six months, and I, I ain't trying to push anybody to, you know...
And that's obvious. I went out the other day and like I was saying, Shale's, you know, stay, operating at a bare minimum. And if that happens, it needs to happen before he gets out, obviously, but...
I mean, if I'd already proisted, I'm not going to keep buying groceries and stocking.
I'm quitting. I want to get somebody in there to look at it, and that's the thing about tomorrow, Monday.
I, we just have to call again. I, I'm hoping that it's Northwest Councils, the local governments can give us your name.
Because you know, if they come home, well, they don't use sooth or craters in my thirty-nine months.
You know, you talking about NACOM?
No, it's a Keith King, Munchelle.
Keith King.
Keith, Keith, Keith.
Keith Jones.
I mean, I, I got three numbers from them yesterday and gave them to the bank.
And you may know it better than I do.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they know some people because they're, they're, they fool with situations like this. They, they're familiar with them. Yeah, and that's what they're for. We need to rely on people like that to help us make the right decision, people that think, that sees it.
We've worked with them since the tornado. We know them well.
They'll, they'll give us the phone number. They're not going to pay nobody to come.
No, 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 no. We just need phone number and, uh, to get somebody to do that. But yeah, they, that's what they're set up to try to help small towns.
Well, they, they got the grant.
They're working on their grant now for the...
They got this grant.
Yeah, they got this grant. They got every grant we had just about after the tornado.
I mean, this is not new to them.
That being said, tell us what you, didn't you work on something or get something approved through the bank? Tell us what that is. What?
You talking about the terms?
Well, yeah, tell us, didn't you talk to the bank, and they said that they would grant, tell us those, we haven't discussed that yet. Tell us what one of our options is right now.
Their, their terms, if we buy them out, is four point three five percent for five years fixed, and then...
And that's through people's trust.
Through people's trust.
And they said they would loan six fifty? Is that what you presented?
Pending the appraisal, which is still an appraisal.
What you going to say? That goes back to what you say. You going to have to have that done.
Now, you're going to praise the building. Of course, it's going to praise for that because that's what you're doing.
That's building.
You're doing the building. You're not doing the content. So you're taking the building that you already own and you're appraising it against that being a loan. That's what you're doing.
Well, that's what anybody's going to do.
I know, but I'm just saying, that's what we're doing to get the money. That's exactly what we're doing.
Right now on the table.
Yeah, because that's exactly the same option that option two was doing, is just letting them use the deed for collateral. It's no different.
And that's going to be five years.
So you're giving the deed away, and you're, you're done. You did it.
Well, the only reason I said that before is because the other night, we don't, somebody in the audience said, "Well, the building don't really belong to us because it was built by Grant and Lenny."
No, it belongs to us.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying what somebody said on the audience. I didn't say...
No, I would say two or three times.
It was said, "If we don't own it and we didn't have it," because he commented that, "Well, it's taxpayers' money. Why would you not give them the building? Because it would be theirs anyway." So, wasn't there, because there was several statements made that if that place closed, nobody would come in here. Well, if nobody's ever going to come in here, you've got a building sitting there. If you go up to some of these towns, because that's what the comment, they're sitting there and there's nothing you can get in there. So what does it matter if you give it to them for collateral?
If y'all want to do that, I'm going to...
I'm just asking that question because that was one of the things that the audience said. You're going to let a building sit here and nobody's going to come back into it. You go up in Florence, you go up Munchelle, you go to Russell, you go to Hamilton. How many vacant buildings are there?
Plenty.
Plenty. Now, they can get their money out, so what is the difference? And that way, you're not getting the...
What was the payment on that, Daryl, for the first five, for that sixty-year term? Was that...
Just a little over four thousand. Let me just grab that one.
But didn't they say if they weren't the money, their payment would be too high for cash flow?
If they couldn't go?
No.
If they couldn't go, that's why it was made, there was needed, they could go fifteen years.
If they couldn't get the deed, it's in this option.
Still, I ain't got to say much, but I gave a proposal of how much money we can put aside in case they fold up to make these payments of four thousand dollars. If we just take it out of that, and then, then the fire department is sixteen thousand dollars a year that we're gonna have that we ain't got.
So, after, you said after you moved, not in Roswell.
A year, even if we had two thousand a year, within two years, it would be covered.
After you move to eighty thousand, what does that leave us in our occupation?
We've got one hundred and ten thousand right now.
So, if you have to move another ten, it leaves us with a hundred, that going into the next year.
Well.
So, hypothetically, what you're saying, four times fails forty-eight thousand, if we took that out, that's gonna leave us with about fifty thousand.
Per year, seeing we can keep doing that, till we got enough to pay it off.
And not make the raise down.
Because it's a balloon rate, you have to do more than that, that's a flat rate, after that, it goes.
It don't gonna, I mean.
It's a balloon rate, it's what you're saying.
It can go up or down, I mean, you can automatically assume, but I'm sure it's got a cap, when it can go up.
If the cap is five, you wanna go over, is all I'm saying.
We're a council, we can turn right around, didn't they?
Yeah, I'm just saying, your option would work if you got that, but you would wanna put more earmark more aside, I'm agreeing with that, don't get defensive. You gotta look at what your occupational is, based on if you think that's gonna be sustainable.
We don't get back in here, and then we get clear problem in, but, you know.
If you earmark it, you gotta, if you earmark it, and then you gotta make sure that any family knows where that was for, plus the other agents. You've already got, you've already got a liability of a hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars that's not earmarked, that we've got to pay.
Did, did you say that we've got the money to pay the car, no car?
I've got some of the money, I can pay part of that off.
See, if we can get that out from others, and, and if the fire department can pay their own bill, we're basically, other than utilities and employee salary, we're free and clear of all debt. But that's got to be extinguished, though, we can't, we can't say hypothetically, we've got, we've got to know.
No, you got, that's right, cause right now, you got a lump sum.
And is the fire department willing to make that payment, can we vote on that for us, to make that payment out of that money, or, so that's another thing, you know?
We, no, it ain't up to them.
Well, so I didn't think it was, but I know this, see, everything changes.
I didn't.
See, if they can be responsible for that, and if we can pay them cars off, then we could go back and look at our budget on our employee salary.
You gotta look at all that.
Yeah.
If you don't look at. If you don't look at your overall budget, look at everything that you owe versus your asset debt and all that, and try to maintain your current budget. And plus, if you want some increase in insurance, increase in all this other stuff, over that twenty-year period, that you've got to be able to sustain, and make sure that we still have the same amount of coming in, we've gotta look at all that, and with that current payment and everything else, you got, that's budgeting.
We gotta write it down, we gotta get it done, we gotta write that.
They're gonna take over the insurance on the building, so that's gonna save four thousand now, a year.
Well, I ain't gonna bring it up right now.
Well, it is, cause we're gonna put in contract that they offer.
Huh?
We're gonna put it in their contract that they have.
General liable for the insurance.
Why would we pay it?
Well, that's a good question, why are we paying it now?
Because we own it now, and we done the deal, that's how we read it.
You wanna read this contract?
I read it.
We ain't supposed to be paying that. It's right there, that was the amendment, we're not supposed to be paying it, we hadn't been supposed to pay it for two years.
Anyway, we're not going to.
Well, it's too, we've been paying it.
So, they need reimburse us for that, then, that they agreed to there, come on. Basically.
It's in that contract, that was the amendment.
What about that, Tony?
Do what?
What about that? Will he be liable for that?
Regardless of how this is.
Yeah, for three, the contract.
Regardless.
I'm talking about the new people coming in, I, I mean, that's all I can look at now.
I know, but we gotta handle the stuff that's going on, too.
He's leaving, so it won't matter, so.
It does matter, it ain't over, there's money that's, that's on the table, there's also.
Is all another thing?
There's also other money that we don't know where's that either, on the payment, that's been in here, that's.
It's in a fund.
Where's that thought at?
Parlor, do you know the name of the fund?
Yeah, that it paid for us.
It's the Community Development Authority.
All that's gotta be put back in the budget, too, because he, he reneged on there a bit, so that money comes back into this town of Hackleburg.
Nobody's saying it don't.
I'm saying, we gotta close all that out before he leaves.
If we could recruit that, that'd be what, thirty or forty thousand, we could put in that account, for rainy day fund for the grocery store.
That's correct.
Seventeen thousand, is it?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It, it is actually point four of the contract.
And then say if you could recruit that insurance, tell them for it, give us about twenty to start out with, put in that fund.
That money's sitting there in that room.
And, and that's gonna go to us, correct, since he didn't fulfill his, suppose obligation was, and we didn't own the grant. So, we could recruit that, and what would that be, eight thousand on insurance, if he agreed to pay that, maybe knock it off the loan, if he owes it to us, tell him to knock that off the loan, that's ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand. You know, you know what I'm saying? If he was liable for that insurance, we was paying it, if he would agree, whatever comes to to knock that off the loan, that'd be less money.
We dropped the ball on that, I mean, it's, as much as our fault as it is his, but he's willing to write a check for a hundred and fifty thousand and walk away.
Can who, Tony, how did we, no, let's, let's specify, who dropped the ball?
Who?
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 It was in the contract, so who dropped it, it ain't me, this, this.
Well, it ain't none of you, I'm just saying.
No, I take ownership if I dropped it, but that was presented to them. That amendment was.
It is what it is, it just a form.
I'm just glad I quit arguing.
I ain't arguing, I mean, I'm just glad.
If a person's going out of business, they're not gonna recruit, so we still gotta keep up the liability insurance. If he closes the door tomorrow, we're still gonna have to make that payment on that building for our liability, bottom line. So, we've lost four thousand, whatever that, I don't know how much that payment is.
Is that a year?
If it's four thousand, five thousand dollars, we're gonna have to continue paying that out.
That coffee, Daryl, how much it was?
It, I'm gonna say about thirty-nine hundred.
It was right at four.
About that four thousand.
So, we, what, when did we amend the contract?
December.
January of eighteen?
December first of two thousand seventeen.
It'll be two years in December, then.
If you get a copy.
It was, it was, uh, the second day of December of twenty, uh.
Right there.
Nineteen.
There's your amendment.
I mean, twenty-eighteen.
Yeah.
So, a year and a half.
It's a waste of six thousand dollars, then. It's four thousand a year, and that's half a year, but, yeah.
Can't let no number.
Yeah, well, that's just hypothetical. But there's one thing we've got to do, we've got to agree on something before we leave here, how we're gonna pursue and move forward. That, that's a given, and. And what Kevin said, get the assessment, we've got one there, if we go that route, that's what us borrowed the money, correct?
Yeah.
To them, but they said that they.
Said that's not.
If we provided the deed, that they could get the money and get the terms stretched out where they needed it to be, where they could make cash flow.
Sure they can, if we can.
But what they, what they told you, I mean, part of them drawing this, that, what they told you initially.
Anybody should be able to, the building's gonna stand on its own.
Right.
But now, if they do leave in two years, like y'all are worried about, but the building's gone for us for good.
Could we not, could we not draw up a contract and make them? Wow, or somehow, don't we?
That, that story.
If we turn the deed over, could we draw up a contract, and just like, do it sort of like, you know, the grant issue?
Well, the problem is, you remember I said that this is a Hobson's choice, and I think that's exactly what it is, I don't think he's willing to do that. I don't think we're, I understood him, we're not in a position to negotiate at that level.
So, what he, that's what he said, he said that.
That's what he said, and I took him at his word.
No, he said that, said he didn't, he wasn't gonna go the deed route, him borrow the money.
He said option three.
He said option three.
That's what he said in here that night.
But he started.
Right.
Well, what did I ask him on the phone?
He started, said he might have luck to do some little negotiating toward the end now, before he left.
Well, you asked him about the SBA loan, about the possibility of the payment, now.
Yep, and so that leaves it open, that he does have other options, we can't.
Well, since I was basically a good damn real, but I mean, I don't think it would ever put a little bit of more weight, now, we might not can, but.
One, one thing, that I, the thing, you got to look at on the SBA loan, what's the time element of that? And, and is it even feasible?
He's gonna give us that answer tomorrow, as we're committed to.
Yeah, it may be feasible for him to get the loan, but it's not gonna be feasible to keep it open.
He didn't say that, he said, we can't, we can't read what his mind is, our job is to give him an option, give him an option, not fill it.
No, it's not up to him, he's not gonna go six months, keep stocking it, keep paying bills, keep losing money, to see if he can get an SBA loan. But he's not, I mean, I, I don't know how.
Well, we're not talking about while he's getting SBA loan, you're saying.
I know that, he's not gonna wait on him.
You're afraid of while he's gonna shut the doors apart, if we don't agree, you're afraid of while he's gonna shut the doors apart, if the town of Hackleburg does not agree on option three.
I'm not afraid of it. It will not be option three, but an SBA loan is gonna be drug out so far that.
But if he could get.
But you're not gonna agree on any of that.
I don't agree on option two, I am agreeing on option two, but I would not agree on option three.
He just sat there and called us, option three is my only option.
He also said on the phone a minute ago, that's why I had Daryl calling, that he would, would he look at that, if it was a better rate, would he consider, cause we want him here. I asked him that, I think part of the problem we got here, is we should have had a negotiating team, and come together, and negotiate it, instead of this here, it's like, she said stuff.
Option two.
He said, she said, I said.
That's the first time we ever saw, but we didn't hear about all the options, there's more options on the table.
He laid them out here.
See, option two, line two, says we'll give the building, he could get his payment down to four thousand where he wants it, and I think he would go that route, cause it's basically the same as three. Only difference, we're having to get the money here. Well, see, he, he's got it through out there on the second line, that was just for ten, he said he can do that.
It's a quail.
Put it right here, where he's leaving, get the paper.
We're putting it up to five.
I don't know, if we do that.
Option three, we're usually doing for quail.
Yeah, but we don't, turning over to, if he leaves less than fifteen years, but we could get it through.
Well, I know, if they can't make it, it's gonna burn back the bank, I guess we can buy it back then, but.
Yep.
I mean, we get to the point where we can't make our payment, and we have to run the taint, one of your options, they say, hey, that, they went on, I'm gonna have to cut something, so I'm gonna let that building go back.
Back, back and launch, it's probably ten hard, I get the deed, somebody put something in there.
But I'm, I think the citizens deserve, cause it's building, don't you get it?
I do, but I, I think that building is a great asset, I don't think we need to jeopardize that thing in any way, and, you know, I'm just trying to vision. You know, what if we do, do borrow some money or whatever, if that's the option we end up having to go, is I think that place they can say, say what, as least amount of possible, we gotta pay for that equipment. And then we've got, we've got a building and property and equipment in it, that's ours, that is Hackleburg.
You're gonna find out what we got first, before, what is legally right ours, before you have to break.
And, uh, every, the building and the land and property's ours. So, but get the couriers, all that is said, and if it's three hundred thousand dollars, we gotta go borrow it, go borrow it, but at least Hackleburg still got a market. They still, and they've got a place where any other grocer can move right in, go right where they need to. I don't see turning loose that asset, no sir, and I'm not, for just that borrowing money, I don't borrow the least amount of money, cause all of us that in here are gonna have to pay it back. I mean, they, they don't grow trees.
Well, we, we don't know that we have to pay it back, I mean, hopefully, we don't have to pay back a dime ever.
That's like the market is.
Well, if you don't worry about it at that bank, you're gonna be looking for somebody to pay them money.
Well, if they make it.
Somebody will pay. Somebody will pay.
I know, it'll be us or somebody, or whoever buys it, and I, and I, they do great, cause that's, that'd be good problem, and. But I, I think there's a couple of things we need to go over pretty quick, before we make much, any decision. One's an appraisal, one's what kind of impact it's gonna have, and it's not gonna take, it'll take two or three days, when you get the right guy up here and look at that. And that'll list, so about what kind of tax management we have to draw it to.
Put it on a sheet of paper, that way, we'll have it all down.
I, I would say it's a lot safer to appraise a home, and I've never sent an appraiser to come out in two or three days and get it appraised. I mean, I don't know how long it'll take, I mean, it's not gonna be that quick.
Well, I wouldn't touch it with tense of policy until it gets appraised by somebody that's unbiased and knows that business. Now, that's just where I'm at, that's my, that's my, that's fair, for people, for everybody. They got it quiet, man, I could call them.
Yeah. It's your turn, Mr. Bornwood.
Uh, give us another one.
I mean, it's a work session, they can talk, they can.
Yeah, you might talk.
It's a work session, y'all can use it.
Yeah, everybody has anybody, okay?
What work session, if anybody can give her in, put it.
I don't know if anybody's thought about this, but you do know the county commission may end up leaving a tax team?
I saw it.
To cover the jail, that hadn't been off the table yet.
There might be.
That's just something to stick back and back in.
Oh, no. On all the people in there now.
Can they do that?
Yeah, yeah.
Would they sell that?
Yeah. But, but my option's still the best we can do without taxing the people, is use the four thousand out of the occupation tax, put it in the bank every month, just like them making the payment, let them make the payment. Us put the same amount in it, in an account in the bank, and then, if they ever pack up and leave, we got that money built up.
And there's something else, I mean, it ain't going back to the tax money, we've got thirty thousand right now in the rainy day fund, off of our one cent school tax, now you'd have to have an amendment. Still waiting circumstance, we need to use that, but that's why we set that aside, whether it be for the schools or the town, because they ain't nothing to say, you, when all this has been considered, too. You gotta think about a national disaster and maintaining it, and am I not, and I won't be totally out of context, but the reason that we was able to maintain at a level that we did, that they not have two or three CDs in the bank that was worth a couple of million to pay employee salaries until they could get back on their feet, and so we got the old council back up. Heaven forbid, I hope I don't ever send no, I've seen one too many already, but. So, we've got thirty.
Yeah, but that's still a fix, so. And that's also a special tax, which is that value right there, now our expenses that we put in there is, is that much, that's what we should have had, you.
Should have, that's if everything goes good, that's what you should have, if it goes good, that's assuming that you don't have a lot of breakdowns, you don't have to buy a lot of equipment, everything on that. So, you can look and see what it is, but that's what I'm looking at, is the revenue budget, place the parking and two thousand dollars extra. We would have to just that offset. That's assuming that you keep the revenue coming in, it's that same, and you don't, and you'd have to look at what you're spending, cause that may get cut out. Don't buy a tractor, you know, we bought tractors that's not in here, too. How do you? Is the backhoe paid for, Daryl? Is the backhoe paid for? Cause see, that would increase that, too, once we get, we got still about three more years, or three more months.
I mean, if we can pay the cost of it, or the Florida department, if we can make them make that payment, you know, I would allow before then the lower salaries.
That's strictly, that's strictly budgeted, and you gotta look at what your actual is, and we're actually in the hole.
Sixty-eight, sixty-five thousand versus the sixteen thousand, we would give us thirty-two thousand in the plus for, for the coming year.
Well, your budgeting tab, if the closes, you can take that off by the way.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, you are, you're taking sixty thousand dollars off if they close, that's correct.
Yeah, and not only that, you're taking jobs, you're taking what they make and they put back into the economy and respend.
Well, that's respend anyway, that's taxes, that's the sixty thousand dollars.
No, if they, if they don't make it, it ain't respended, 'cause they don't have it.
Well, you're losing that anyway, that's the sixty thousand dollars that you're losing.
But you're losing more, you're losing what them people make and put back into the economy.
You're losing the sixty thousand dollars in taxes from that market.
If thirty people have a job and they go to Dollar General and spend part of their money and.
It's spending at Dollar General, the taxes go to them then, it don't go to Dollar General.
The money they make, what do they do with it?
We spend it.
The money them people make.
They spend it?
Where?
No different than where I spend mine.
But if they don't make it, they can't spend it.
And that's right, you lose that tax revenue, which is equivalent to the market.
You don't only lose that revenue, you lose whatever else they'll spend.
If they go, you're saying if they go to another store.
At the mall.
But, that's if they don't get another job, that's, you're saying that person doesn't go get another job, is what you're saying. If they go get another job, they're gonna spend money, but the only thing they're losing, they won't lose that, you'd lose occupational tax if they were not there. If they go to the regular go to work, which is offering jobs right now, then they would pick that up.
Some of them people can't do anything.
I know that, but tax revenue wise, you're losing sixty thousand dollars.
And whatever else they put back into the economy. I mean, I said, you can't get around that.
If they don't go get a job, that's if they don't go get a job. Maybe on unemployment or go ahead and get on social security. Well, they might necessarily not move to another town, they might need to find another job.
Can we help?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
I a hundred percent agree with appraisal, you gotta, I don't really believe a bank, a loan.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna have to appraise.
I'd say the price will come in at seven hundred fifty thousand dollars, words of counsel, I think.
That's what we gotta look at.
We'll give them seven fifty.
Well, what I mean, you know, there's a rest no matter which way you go. But are y'all satisfied with that, to take the loan amount, or y'all just don't wanna take the loan amount?
No, but I, personally, I, I don't mind us taking the loan then, but I think that we gotta know what we can pay for what county.
I understand.
We won't let there more.
And I can't really answer your question until we figure that out.
Now, I'll call you back.
That's why we're going to Brenda, cause.
Y'all able to do with this, if the price comes in, the numbers y'all talking about.
Yeah.
Comes in, y'all, y'all willing to do this?
Yeah, but you know, you're hard going for that.
But they could lose it, if something happened. You know.
What, what, what I like to see is.
Talking about borrowing money just for, what, equal to six hundred fifty thousand dollars?
Is us try to figure out where we got to be in case, just in case something crazy happened, can we, can we survive?
Right.
That's what I'm trying to find in the, because let's say if he comes back and it's nine hundred fifty thousand dollars, we may not can make that kind of payment, we, I don't know where the border is.
No, I think you charge him six fifty, no matter what the price was, I mean, or take it at the.
Not, not me, if it appraises to three hundred fifty.
No, 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 no. That's what I'm saying. You gonna borrow, you gonna pay him six hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Those are the state.
That's what he wants.
Yeah, that's what he wants.
Okay, and if it appraises for more than that, what I'm saying.
Yeah.
If you get on equipment, everything appraised, it's gonna happen, then y'all good with that part. Right?
As, as far as us, let's, I wanna make sure though, that we can survive.
Yeah, but I'm just talking about appraisal and that loan.
Yeah, and, and I, I think we need to retain that building and retain them goods that's in there, that's ours, I don't think we need to turn that deed loose for nothing.
That's what I'm saying, to keep from putting the building up.
Well, even if you don't make it, we've still got that.
We can say.
That's just how, I know, you still have the buildings.
That's right, you got something to look at.
And if will.
If, if we borrowed the money, we would have to put the building up for collateral.
Yeah.
We would have to, but the loan would be under the town of Hackaburgh as collateral, there's no way around it. That building's hit, put up for collateral, no matter what, that's right, and then we would have to, we'd have to make the payment, I mean, it's got to.
Yeah, if they get what they could, what they have.
Explain to me on option two, my, it's fifty thousand dollars lower, Wally's offer is to them versus fifty thousand dollars more to us.
That's just what he was borrowing.
Why is he borrowing, is he gonna get him fifty thousand dollars more or what?
Yeah, fresh air, six hundred thousand.
What he had to bring to his table or whatever.
'Cause I couldn't figure that now versus that, and this was six hundred fifty seven thousand, this one was six hundred, and that one was six fifty. One of the different values too.
I don't know, I just always said option three is all we could do.
I think we need to, after we get the appraisal, I think we need to meet with him, well, as a team in.
Meet him.
With Mr. Philip.
The buyer.
Yeah.
After we get to appraisal, if it appraises, if we don't get it bought, it ain't gonna matter, it's gonna close, I'm telling you.
I know you told me that.
I don't know how to explain her to make it, I mean, I, I don't, and I know you, there's nothing you know about it right now, but.
But we gotta go through this, we can't just go in here and say, Wally.
Gotta be appraised.
We've gotta do this.
There, the bank is gonna appraise.
How much does it cost to have an appraised, does anybody have any idea?
It might cost us, uh, what I can find out, might cost us about fifteen hundred dollars.
Yeah. It's about like when they come out to Freshland.
Well, my time's depending on what's, they'll be done if we listen. And they ain't got more than they do with the house, eh?
The bank can do all. I mean, they're gonna do that.
It's not gonna be any different than any one of them. It's the same thing.
I don't think I'm dead my land, you know, the nine months, well, he was too big, little business and dinner.
Well, I talked to the appraisal guy today and he, I told him.
Then he can move on and quit.
Said he would.
Since we've got five months, four months left in the end of the, the year budget, can you do a forecast? A projection that we might be at this, at this value, to see what our overall possibility income would be on the income.
You didn't get everything, you know, that you know that's gonna occur.
Yeah, and that way we could actually see if we're, if we're gonna be in the red or the good based on our current budget, and that would determine if we're gonna have cut, if we, we ain't got projects anyway. But if we can actually see a true snapshot and forecast that out, and that will tell us if we can do what Dawn is requesting. And see if we can actually do.
I know it'll work.
It might work, but we need to forecast.
Right.
We need it.
I'm not good, I'm just really good.
I mean, you can, you can earmark anything, we said we're gonna earmark it out of the, the tax money, but we gotta make sure we do that. I mean, I thought that's what we done with some other stuff, but.
Can we get them appraisals and the figures by Monday or next meeting?
Appraiser, I can't answer that.
Don't be up to the bank.
That's what I'm saying, can we get the appraisal and them figures by Monday or next meeting?
I'm gonna say.
'Cause I'm like you, that might is a sense urgency here.
That would shock me, me, I'm all shocked.
Well, if we make the shock of the position we're in.
If he was off today and worked on it till Monday, he wouldn't be finished.
I wouldn't think so.
The only one that can pull it off is Gerald.
Yeah.
Gerald, he can pull off that appraisal that.
He can do it, he's a.
He, he is the bank, but he's gonna bring in an appraiser to do it.
The problem is.
But he can tell him to get in here and do it.
Oh, yeah.
They can get it, but that, that appraisal will be involved, it really will, I, I would.
That's what we brought down.
I would say if they, he could help speed it up, but at the same time, they got a certain duty that they have to fulfill, so. They're not just open to doing it the way.
They're, they're regulated like everybody else, they have to do it.
Like they're stay up there.
They have to do it, but. So we're saying if it appraises, we're, we're gonna do the deal?
I'm saying we need financial impact for it, I mean, the second thing, get to appraisal, and then the third thing, let's sit down and look at it, agree to doing it or not do it.
You know, whichever way is the best option.
We can do it, people wants us to do it, we agreed to do it, we need to do it. We need a few more answers.
You need to write that down. You gotta, you need to write that down.
What's that?
Just like I said, or can you remember, oh, get the. But she's, no. Come to my appraisal.
I've already been talking to them.
There you, my name is, um.
Sergeant.
Yeah.
You know, Fitz, our, for Darryl, if they, if they regularly charged, I'm, I'm up for, if they'd regularly charge fifteen hundred dollars and they, they'd come over here and do it next week for two thousand dollars, I'd pay.
Nice little one, but.
'Cause I think they'd well spend, us knowing what, where to get. What's a, a, a freight bag.
Well, I know the shelves are getting smaller over there.
Yeah. It's where we're at, Joey.
Get forecast from Brenda and get appraised, or Alan or.
Well, they don't be good with that to maintain at a minimum level. And call him and ask it.
I will.
Well, I guess it's either that or he's gonna lose anyway, 'cause if he don't do it, then they shut down, like you said, he might sell that equipment for two hundred thousand, I know he don't wanna do that. And, and that's why I know he's wanting out, and the thing about it, that we finally got something to move on to get him out now, you know. If, and I don't think he won't certainly lose no more, does it, if we can show him that we're obligated and we'll get this thing moving forward. I said, if he keeps talking, we're just keeping up running in a minimum until we can get, do it.
Anybody else got anything?
Hey, what is this for?
That's just, I didn't mention this to you about what we can, we can't look at and all that. It's been questions and issues in a row about it, and that's just your information, not for the dog.
Well, that's stuff we were talking about.
Counsel, okay. See.
What's that?
We have tax.
That's what that repair says you can, that's what I gotta, I don't know. Can you why?
There's no one ever told me that they could, they've always told me that I cannot show it.
You cannot. That would give it up with that. Would the, uh.
The mayor reported for the only ones that can see the tax revenue brought in by companies in the town.
I have, I have never seen, um, any cases or anything on that, I'm sure, but I don't know. Tell me, like you got.
So the council, the legislative branch, the council has the authority over the finances and the property of the municipality, if you're over the finances, how can you run the finances if you can't see the finances?
I'm just going by what.
Now, you gonna have to go into the, probably the article, it's got, I didn't go into article, but.
Well.
And it says the council establishes policy, passes ordinance, sets tax level, and determines what sort of services the municipality will offer, and has authority over all other legislative aspects of municipal government.
You do, you, you can call the league municipality, we, we do that and, and find that.
I'm gonna call them tomorrow, I should have.
Well, maybe I would like to know.
I will, but the attorneys for the company that collects it.
And that's what I was told when I took over, do not let anyone see these taxes.
Well, the attorneys for the company, no government, state albanos list, that's how they do it.
You know, that's what I was telling the former clerk, and I thought the former clerk should know.
She might say that, you know, Ruth's changing. See, I'm just wanting to keep me out of mine, I'm not trying to be smarter than others.
Well, that I, you know.
That was just like the same in her.
The people tell you that, and the people that want to tell you not.
Tony, how often does Ruth Law and Ruth change state albanos, on a big occasion?
They, 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 they change.
Yeah.
I think they changed since yesterday.
Do what?
Did they change since yesterday?
No.
Okay.
They were, they, they're.
How can you build the finances though, if you can't see the reports, that's what I can understand.
You, you know, you get notice that they're about to change, you know, and you know that things are going before the list.
I was just thinking.
But that's true, I mean.
He's been.
You've been a smart one, but.
If you wanna read it, I'll go on to the code of nineteen seventy-five.
Yeah, it's gotta go out.
It's called the municipality rule, 'cause we fall under less than two thousand people, and you can find all kinds of knowledge, if you don't read it.
I just didn't have time to get into it, yeah.
Instead of getting, instead of getting into this, well, I think it's this.
It's heavy, that's why I'm.
We're supposed to know all that, to be on this, yeah, is that when you're born?
Well, I was someone.
Nineteen seventy-five, yeah.
I seen, she did.
What year are you graduating? Nineteen.
Essentially, we're here looking at their tax return.
Two thousand.
It's not over.
I'm not, we ain't looking at the tax return, we're just.
I said two thousand, it's twelve thousand.
We ain't looking at their financial.
Twelve thousand.
It won't be no different.
Find out for sure.
I'm just telling them, I'm just telling them. I'm just telling them, the sales tax.
Yeah, 'cause you was on that, yeah. My dad. He gave, he gave me every bit of his books, he gave me the ethics books, he gave me.
Everybody can come up.
And I got it at my house.
Y'all might know the one too.
Yeah, well, we can't, we can't find that now.
Anybody got anything else?
I'm trying to find that. I'm trying to find that.
All right, appreciate everybody coming.